Welcome to Fresno City Council Meeting for June 25th. Good to have you all here. And we will start with the roll call.
Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Brandal, Councilmember Capriolio, Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Quintero, Councilmember Soria, and President Baines.
We have a new president in town. For the day at least. So Lex, we'll start with our invocation. Captain Garza, if you'd be so kind as to lead us in the invocation. And with everyone standing, remain standing, and we'll salute the flag immediately after the invocation. Thank you.
If everyone would bow their heads with me for a word of prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we start this day asking for a special blessing upon city council members. We especially ask for knowledge, wisdom, guidance, and understanding in every decision they make today to govern this great city. Dear Lord, we also pray for our mayor, city manager, police chief, and all department directors and their staff as they lead and guide their employees to serve the people of Fresno. We thank you, Lord, for all the great quality service our city employees provide, and we ask that you continue to protect our city employees and their families. Lord, as you know, we have seen communities in our city affected by an increase in violent crime. One of our goals is to create safe neighborhoods where our children can live, play, and go to school, but we can't do it alone, Lord. We need the support and the involvement of the community to keep our children safe. We know through you, Lord, there's nothing impossible, so we pray for a special blessing upon our men and women of the Fresno Police Department as they protect and serve the residents of Fresno. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Captain Garza. We'll face the fact, please. Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to liberty, public, and righteous stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think that was one of the most enthusiastic pledges that we've had in a long time, so thank you. Next, we're going to go to our ceremonial presentations. And first is a proclamation by Councilmember Olivier. As he expeditiously proceeds forward in a timely manner.
We, as councilmembers, have the, I mean, we don't have a lot of power, but one thing that we do have the power to do is proclaim a certain day in the city of Fresno. So I consider that to be pretty powerful, and it's something that, it's a great honor to be able to recognize groups in our community and prominent people, people who've made an impact, people who've made a contribution. So we all do it from time to time. And I was very fortunate to be asked to work with my councilmembers and also our mayor to proclaim today to be Parks and Recreation Day? Is it day or month? It's, alright! Alright! So our, Parks and Recreation are so important and so much fun, they don't get a day, they get an entire month. So congratulations to you. Our Parks Department, like, we have a lot of different departments in the city of Fresno. And if you're out there and you see, for example, maybe a police officer coming, or a fire inspector, or a parking control officer coming, maybe you kind of go like this, depending on what you're doing. But when you see one of our fun Parks Department people coming, you go toward them because they're so exciting and they're always cooking something fun up. Why don't you all come forward? Our Parks and Recreation Department, come forward to be recognized and show everybody your cool outfits. I mean, you're giving out neon glasses and stuff. Come forward. And it's okay to clap as well. You know, this department has been hit so hard with the Great Recession that our city is starting to come out of it. We're putting more money than we have in recent years into our parks and recreation. They work so hard. Oftentimes, it's a very thankless job. They're out there, everything from constructing new parks, writing grants to get the money to construct new parks, cleaning the parks, working with young people, working on getting sponsorships. So it's not just when you drive by and you see a grass field and maybe some kids playing on the totlot, or some people playing softball. So much goes into making that possible, and these are the great people at the city of Fresno who do that. And Manuel is our Parks Department Director. Would you like to say a few words about, and thank our folks?
And talk about why parks are so important to a city's vibrancy and its vigor.
Well, thank you, Councilman Olivier, and members of the city council. For me today, it's almost like, kind of like deja vu in our illustrious city manager. You know, as most of you know, at one time I worked for the city of Honolulu, and testifying before the city council in Honolulu with an aloha shirt was common practice, and all of a sudden I find myself, you know, before this august body in an aloha shirt again. So it's a very interesting experience for me. But July is going to be Parks and Recreation Month. This department does incredible things for this city, and these are many of the people that really bring it all together. There's going to be an array of programs offered, not only during the month of July, but also throughout the year. But I'd just kind of like to give some highlights of what this department did for the city of Fresno this past year. You know, we just recently had our Community Science Dedication over at Highway City yesterday for the new science center, but during the past year, we touched over 66,000 kids' lives and participated in that program alone. Our Youth Jobs Preparation Program that operates out of four high schools impacted 700 high school-age students this past year. Our Lifestyle Fitness Program, which your standing next to Sarah who coordinates that program, affects the lives of over 450 young people here in our community. Our Senior Hot Meal Program serves over 40,000 meals for Fresno senior citizens. Our Aquatics Program, by the end of summer, will have had over 100,000 kids participating in our pools, in our splash pads throughout the city. Our Spark Program, which operates out of 29 school sites for after-school programs, affects over half a million kids a year. And our after-school programs in our recreation centers also impacts over half a million kids per year. So your Parks and Recreation Program does a lot of things, and I think the cost benefit of the money that you give us, we spend it well, and I think we really impact people's lives in a very positive way. So thank you, Councilman.
So we have a special proclamation for you, and there are a lot of wherashes here explaining how great you all are, but I'm just going to read a few of them. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Fresno, California, and whereas our Parks and Recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas Parks and Recreation Areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide buffers to development and produce habitat, produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has declared July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the city of Fresno recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and city council recognize July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fresno.
Thank you, Parks and Recreation. And just to confirm what Manuel talked about, thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Tonight, at Eldorado Park, we're going to have movies in the park, District 4, at Eldorado Park, so come on out. It'll be a great evening. We'll have movies, ice cream, other treats, so that's all through Parks and Recreation. Again, they're just a phenomenal organization in District 4, really, as well as the entire council. Appreciate your hard work. Thank you very much.
Claudia, Claudia, do we have Richard? Alright. Our next proclamation is a special recognition to our very good friend, Richard Marshall. Richard, come on forward. Good to see you again. Thank you very much. And Manuel, do you want to present the, I mean, do you have a few words to say? Okay. Well, I've got some notes here, but I'll go off them to talk about Richard. I met Richard through the Chief of Staff in my district office, Claudia Ruiz, and Claudia is a former Parks Department employee, which is why we're the most, that's why we're the most fun council office, because we're always having a good time. But she brought, introduced me to Richard, and he's an amazing individual. He's somebody who has been a philanthropist, he has been a volunteer, he has always been there for us and here in the city of Fresno, always been there for the youth of the city of Fresno. If the Parks Department needs something from him, whether it's your time to lend your good name to a cause, a donation, you've always been there for the kids in the city of Fresno. And I want to kind of go through these notes. Now, Richard is very special for a number of reasons, but he's also, I have an 11-year-old boy who's a big fan of Richard's experience. He's an NFL, are you, are you playing this year, or have you retired? He's a retired NFL player, he's with the Panthers, he's with the Chargers, he's with the, oh yeah, and of course, of course, a former Fresno State Bulldog, too. So...
Go Dogs! Go Dogs!
Right. So you've given $25,000 to the Fit Camp for the past three years, and that's an extraordinary contribution, and we really appreciate that. And he also paid for the kids in Fit Camp to go to Disneyland, folks. And so for all that you've done, we have a little certificate for you. So, I mean, we really, there should be a car or something out front, but we're still kind of pulling out of a recession, so we do have a very nice certificate here to Richard Marshall in appreciation of your outstanding support for City of Fresno Parks Department Healthy Lifestyles Fitness Camp on this day, 25th day of June 2015. We thank you for your service to our community. And we want to let Manuel say a few words as well.
Thank you, Councilman. I first met Richard Marshall about a year ago when I first came on board, and I was extremely impressed with the programs and his philanthropy, you know, for this department. But after I began to know and understand Richard Marshall, I must say, I was so impressed. He's probably one of the most humble people, and one, and an individual that really shies away from the limelight. I mean, I'm shocked that he's even here today. You know, but when he goes out there and he works with our kids, I mean, the fact that he, you know, played here at Fresno State, you know, his family lives here in Fresno, he loves his community, he's like a magnet, the kids just, you know, gravitate to him. And this man is the type of role model that we need to have throughout our city. He's a product of our community, he went to Fresno State, and he's interested in working in the well-being of our, of the kids here, the kids that live here in Fresno. Richard, it's a real honor to have you affiliated and working with our department. Thank you very much for all you do for us.
Thank you very much. And the last time I saw Richard, we were in line filling, I think Thanksgiving boxes or Christmas food boxes for folks. And so he's there for the big, big stuff, and he's also there to fill Christmas food boxes. So thank you again, Richard, appreciate it very much. And thanks, Parks, as well, for coming out. Now, you young folks here are who? This is our Fit Camp?
Yeah!
Alright. Give them a round of applause.
You're on the clock, Councilmember.
Okay, the next proclamation, how many people in here does your job depend on ag? Show of hands, show of hands, okay. We're so excited to have you here, and we're so excited to recognize today what is really becoming, it's a force in our community. And it started on Facebook. And we were just talking with the creators of the Facebook group, My Job Depends on Ag, Steve Malanca and Eric Wilson, and they were talking about a marketing company. And people pay a lot of money to marketing companies, tens of thousands of dollars. Hey, I got this bar of soap, let's get it viral, let's get this bar of soap to take off. We want to get 100,000 followers for our chip, our potato chip, or our bar of soap. And they pay these marketing companies, and so often, it goes nowhere. Because there's no, hi. What are you guys doing? Okay. Oh, no. I think, do I sense a flash mob coming on? Oh, they have a, so it is, it is a flash mob. Alright, I can put my, I can put this on hold for a second. Oh, no!
Hey Clint, let's go. Come on, buddy. Let's get in there, let's do it. Come on now.
I'm like the Tin Man. I can't do it. Good job.
Thank you so much. That was really, really inspirational, hey. Wow.
That may be the first time we've ever heard Olivia Newton-John in the council chambers.
Is that Clint Olivier Newton-John?
Okay. My job depends on ag. How do you follow that? What a bunch of great kids. So I was saying, they're, oh yeah, if you want to start a movement on social media, you hire one of these social media companies to get whatever it is, your cause or your product, to take off. Well, here we have two regular guys that started up a Facebook group, what, a month ago, six weeks ago? About five weeks ago? And come on up, just come on up for a second, we're going to play a really short video. This is Eric and this is Steve. And just real quickly, you started about five weeks ago, how many, how many members of your group do you have?
26,000, a little over 26,000.
26,000 in about five weeks. That's unheard of. That's, that's a force, really, to be reckoned with. So I think a round of applause for these guys would be appropriate. So we have a short video that we're going to show to talk about agriculture and why it's important, and then we're going to hear from Eric and Steve really quick and recognize them as well for their work, because this isn't the last you're going to hear from these two. This is something that's going to take off, as you see, you'll see more and more elected officials and bodies recognizing their work, because it's very important. We'll talk about it in just a sec.
My name's Levon Allen, and I'm the owner of The Farmer's Daughter here in Fireball, California. My job and my business depends on agriculture.
The reason for gathering all of this farm equipment in the alfalfa field we chose for this event was to create a visual for people who don't understand the ag economy we have here in central California with the help of water.
The agricultural industry for the city of Fireball is the main provider of jobs, revenue sources, and really the whole existence for the city. If we didn't have agriculture, there wouldn't probably even be a need for the city to exist right here.
Today's effort was important to symbolize the value to local vendors, people, and farmers of the need for reliable water.
If anything happens, we get it firsthand, because, I mean, the farmers are doing a bad time out there, they're coming in with their worried face, and they tell us everything that's going on.
When there's water flow, business is great. The last year, I'm probably down, this last past year, 25 to 30 percent on my business, just because a lot of people unemployed. You know, when, when the water and the agriculture hurts out here, it hurts everybody. We're a small business that thrives on having, you know, water available to the farmers.
There's not the tax revenues for the city. The city isn't getting roads repaired, they're not keeping up on just some of the general maintenance stuff that they need to do in the town. And so the tax revenue has just dropped a huge amount.
I just think it'd be nice to have congressmen down here and people fighting for us up in Washington and up in Sacramento to get the word out that food doesn't just show up on the doorsteps or at the grocery stores, there's a process. And every time that there's a lack of water, I don't care if it's 10 percent, 2 percent, 25 percent, or 30 percent, people are laid off.
California.
My name's Rodney Gertsen with Crop Production Service.
My job.
My job.
My job.
My job depends on agriculture.
My job depends on agriculture.
My job depends on agriculture.
My job and my business depends on agriculture.
And so the video talks about the lack of water and how, and how it can affect so many people and so many businesses and so many working families. And we just see a small example here in Fireball, but we're talking, it's Fireball and beyond, and Fresno, and the state of California, and even beyond. And you're getting a response, let's have you come up really quickly and talk about the response that you're getting. Yesterday, or the day before, I went to go meet the people at Fast Signs, Kim and Vanessa, who are producing your logo sticker right now. And they're making, this is the state of California, and it says, "My Job Depends on Ag," but they're now getting orders to make these with the state of Oregon, the state of Michigan, the state of Missouri. This is going national, and it started right here with these two gentlemen. And so you're getting a glimpse of something you're in on the ground floor with. So enough from me. Can you tell, I guess, just talk to us about how this started and where you're at right now? And then I think one of the questions we're really interested is the response, the national response that you're getting. And then the industries that you're hearing from people that you thought, what? locksmith? How does, how does my job depend on ag? But you are, so I'll turn it over to you.
Well, okay. Well, in the winter, I, everybody's read the news reports about, we use 80 percent of the water and only 2 percent of the economy. And I spent a lot of time, my wife would, I'd drive her nuts, because I would spend a lot of time going everywhere I can to try to stand up for ag and, you know, defend us and those numbers. And Steve had that decal and shot it over to me on the telephone one day, and I thought, dude, this is, this is a really good idea, what he's got here, this decal's really good. And the Facebook idea kind of, that helped me, my friend Brian right here, he asked his friends on Facebook, hey, let me just see a picture of what your California looks like today, because it was raining and whatever. And lo and behold, there's pictures that had to do with people and agriculture. So I thought, you know, instead of trying to start a Facebook page that was full of statistics and, you know, kind of like, I'm the one guiding it, let's just have the people in the industry tell them how their job depends on ag. And I'm nervous, so I'm kind of talking, but what's been great is, I know how big agriculture is. I know how it, it's interwoven through the whole, you can't escape it. And what's been great is, it has worked to a certain point where we wanted it to go, where, I always bring this one up, a New Mexico florist thanked California farmers for her flowers. That's not someone that's typically hurt by water cuts that you think of. Last night, there was a great post with a massage therapist who talked about all of her body stuff, her towels, her pima cotton towels, and a lot of her oils and stuff like that, or come from agriculture, and the sugar comes from California. It was really good, and those are the things that we need to show. It's just not the, that picture right there is just almost what it takes to make one bale of hay. And all the jobs there, no one talks about, once that bale of hay is eaten by the cow, and then all the byproducts that come from that aspect. It's just, it's mind-boggling. So, and last night, someone showed a picture of a plate at dinner, and it had a, just kind of, how many jobs is in this plate right here, you know? And the ketchup alone is mind-boggling. So I hope, I hope people can ask themselves, how does ag interact with their lives? Because you can't, we're all clothed here, it has to come from somewhere, and the, we've heard the stuff about farming in a desert, you know, and we can do things here, it's a special location to do it, and it, I think, with the water situation, we can't fix it, it can be fixed. And I believe that, and I'll let, shut up now, because I can go on and on and on. Eric, let Steve do it.
Thank you, and we thank the city of Fresno for allowing us to be in here today. It's a great honor to be here. And our mission with this Facebook page and decal is to generate a place where people that aren't familiar with agriculture to come and see what we do. The whole valley is affected by it, and our water is in jeopardy right now with all the rules and regulations going on throughout the state. And we want to teach people that aren't familiar with agriculture who we are, and this Facebook page Eric generated is a great place for people to learn about agriculture. So if we had a message today, we all have been preaching to the choir... So, if we had a message today, we all have been preaching to the choir, and we all know what we do in agriculture, and we hope that this message get out to the people in the city. If you want to know where your food comes from, your safe food, we have an outlet now and a window for agriculture to show people who we are and what we do.
My final question, so what's next? What's next for your group? Is it kind of steering itself, but is there a place you want to take in it?
We're gonna, we're creating a website. We're building a website. And another person in our, I don't know if she's here, is Teresa here, by chance? She said she might come. But she donated her time and to do this for free, to set it up. And so, that's the next step. We also want to sell other things, not, what's exciting is, what people ask us all the time, "What are we going to do with the money that we're generating from these decals?" And what we're doing with the money is, of course, we want to, scholarships are in mind, things that we can do to defend ag, but also vocational students that often get overlooked. And I can go on and on, but one of the good things that, things that I would want to do with this is, in agriculture, and I was one of them growing up, I loved to fish, and my mind and school wasn't on school, it was on other things. And there's kids that, for example, uses, is an example, you've got a kid that's really great at fabricating and welding, may not be the best student, but I would love to be able to take some of this money and give that kid $3,500 to build himself a mobile welding trailer right out. Maybe we can get people in the community to donate the welding, the welding materials he needs on there, the oxygen tanks. He's out the door, that's his books. He may not go to school, but those are things we're thinking about. And as this thing has grown, this guy keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger, just bigger. And with other states, you know, there's, Twitter has just been really good, too. There's a lot of big people following the Twitter page that are watching. And politicians are paying attention. And so, that's the thing, we're not gonna, we're gonna write the stories now, where I'm tired of having someone else do it. We're gonna do it.
I think one last thing I'd like to say is that we're hoping to unite the ag community throughout, and one of the missions that we have is, we want people to know that power is voting, and we want people to register themselves to vote. And when we have issues coming up, we want to have a good support system for that, so.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have a couple of things here for you. The first one is, and I guess the other question, you brought some stickers, if there are people here that want them, okay.
We'll take the money.
Okay. Okay. The first one, this is from your friends at Fast Signs that make the stickers. They wanted to recognize you on this special day. So, this one's for you, Steve. Eric, this one is for you, your trophy. And then, we have a short proclamation that, I'll pick a few of these wherashes and read for you. Whereas My Job Depends on Ag is an online educational support group for the agricultural community that started on Facebook in May of 2015. Whereas My Job Depend on Ag, Depends on Ag's goal is to show how vital agriculture is in California and how its productivity, processing, and efficiency has provided food and supplies to our homes. And whereas My Job Depends on Ag has achieved their goal to help the public better understand the importance of and appreciation for agriculture's role in our communities and beginning to build long-lasting relationships. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and Fresno City Council members do proclaim Thursday, June 25th, 2015 to be My Job Depends on Ag Day.
Thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you for--
Then I have just a quick announcement to make regarding ag. There will be a town hall meeting tonight, that there will be a national audience that will be good for Fresno to let their voices be heard. Assemblymember Henry T. Perea from our southern area, and Assemblymember Jim Patterson from our northern area, and we have the Executive Director of San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors, Tommy Asqueta, our Director of Public Utilities here at the city of Fresno, and Cole Upton, who's a Valley farmer. They're going to be participating in a water forum tonight that is going to be held at the People's Church Chapel at 7172 North Cedar here in Fresno. It starts at 7:00. It's going to be carried live on K-Free, Channel 59, and also on KMJ. So, listeners will be able to participate during, or with social media, and then questions for the panel will be accepted from the audience. So, you're invited to come down. This is at KMPH tonight. Then Assemblymember Patterson's having an event, a water forum tomorrow night. So, this is, this is the hot-button issue right now, and a good opportunity for folks to get involved and make their voices heard. So, thank you for everything that you've done, and you haven't even begun yet. So, we're happy to meet you and get to know you first, and good luck. Thank you all very much for your attention.
Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate that. My other job is an attorney, and this is an ag-based community. And although I do not practice agricultural law, if the agriculture community does well, the legal business does well, as well as other businesses throughout our community. So, you folks are the cornerstone, the key to the success of this community. So, thank you so much for everything you've done and for this program. I think it's going to really be beneficial to all those in, not only the Central Valley, but into the entire state. So, thank you guys again. Appreciate it. Next, we have council member reports and comments. Councilmember Soria.
Thank you, Council President. So, I just wanted to give thanks to Scott Mosher and Manuel Molinedo for this past, or earlier this week, they took me on a tour of Inspiration Park, which is a park that will be opening west of the 99 later this fall. There's good progress, and we're very excited in District One, and I know just neighborhoods in that area for this park to come. So, I want to thank them for making the time to take me out there and just give me an update on the progress of this project.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Brand.
I'd like to request that we close this meeting in memory of my Uncle Frank Trose, who passed away a few days ago. He was truly a son of Italy and a son of Fresno, and touched a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olivier, you're at 47 minutes, so your comment time.
Well, this is not for me. I wanted to welcome former Madera Sheriff John Anderson to the podium this morning. He is now a member of the staff of State Senator Anthony Canelle, and he wishes to address the council. Welcome, Sheriff.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Olivier, and good morning, other council members. My name is John Anderson, and I am here representing Senator Anthony Canelle. With the recent realignment, he now has a large portion of Fresno County and a small portion of the city of Fresno. And essentially, he's taken over all the flatlands in Madera County. He represents six counties in all, all the flatlands in Madera County, everything straight down Highway 99 and everything west of it in Fresno County. And so, should you need anything from Senator Canelle's office or the state legislature, please feel free to contact me. I've got to say, I've now been to council members' meetings in the nine cities that we inherited with the realignment, and also went to the Board of Supervisors for 16 years in Madera County, and I've never seen a more entertaining ceremony. So, again, I'm John Anderson with Senator Canelle, and I'm from the government, and I'm here to help.
Sheriff Anderson, thank you very much, and please come back to more of our meetings. They're all very entertaining, trust me. Thank you. I have a few comments here. I was, it was a pleasure for me to welcome the winner of the Home of Hope last Thursday to District Four, Amira Gabriellian, who won the $375,000 home. And more importantly, that particular event raised over $440,000 for our community, and that money went directly to 10 local charities. We have local dollars going to local charities, and it's, it was a great event. It was, it was a lot of fun. She was so thrilled. Next, it was a pleasure to welcome back the sixth Honor Flight to Fresno Yosemite International Airport. This time, it was honored by the World War II veterans, of course, as well as the Korean War veterans. So, it was a, I get the chills every time I go out there and see these men and women that I always, I often call the original Freedom Fighters, at least for our generation. So, it was a great event. Congratulations to the Grizzlies. They are number one in the PCL, and as you may or may not know, the River Cats are a former affiliation. We're beating them pretty bad. We're beating them really bad. So, it's kind of a, I love the Giants, but I really love the River Cat, I mean, the, our Fresno Grizzlies, they're doing a great job, so. And last but not least, we have, last night, our community function was on Channel 30. Nathan's Original, the original hot dogs, came to Wesley Church and Eldorado Park, and they brought a portable Coney Island with them. They had games, they had slides, they had all sorts of things, and of course, Nathan's Original Hot Dogs. And with that were the belts that the people win. July 4th is their annual hot dog eating contest. The current record, in 10 minutes, 61 hot dogs. That's a, I could barely eat two, but they were really delicious. So, we appreciate Nathan's Original for all they did for District Four last night. The kids had a great time. It was just a wonderful experience for the community. And also, I met with the management of Fashion Fair. They're doing great things at Fashion Fair. They're expanding the food court, they're getting more retailers. You can find plenty of parking there, that's nice. And I want to congratulate them and urge them to continue to bring that to District Four in Fashion Fair. Thank you. Next, are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
The only change I'd like to mention is the special meeting notice that was noticed for 8:30 or thereafter regarding the authorization of a purchase of the city's fiscal year 2015-16 insurance coverage. So, we'll be doing that as well today.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Second? Motion by Councilmember Soria, second by Councilmember Brand. All is in favor? Opposed? Carries 5-0 with Councilmembers Baines and Brandow absent. Next is the consent calendar. Would any council member like to pull any items for discussion from the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll take this out to the public. Is there anyone out in our community that would like to speak on our consent calendar? Please come forward. There are none. Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilmember Brand, second by Councilmember Quintero. All in favor? Opposed? Passes 5-0. Next, we'll move on to the contested consent calendar. Would any member of the public like to speak on contested consent calendar items? Again, seeing none, we'll take it back up here to the dais. The screen is clear. Is there a motion? Nope, sorry. Okay, thank you. Next is General Administration. Five-year underground utility district plan, staff presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Jim Paulsgrove with the Public Works Department. California Public Utilities Commission Rule 20A requires that PG&E allocate funds for the underground placement of existing overhead electrical facilities. Cities and counties determine the specific locations of utility undergrounding projects through formation of underground utility districts and adoption of five-year district plans. Exhibit A is a recommended five-year underground plan that facilitates the orderly and planned use of future allocations of these funds. The proposed revisions will update the current three-year plan that was last adopted by council on October 8th, 2013. The proposed revisions will omit three districts that have not been formed by the council, omit one district that had been formed by council but has since been rescinded by council, revise the scheduling for six districts which have been formed by council, revise the proposed boundary of one district which has not been formed by council, and will add two districts to the plan. Staff recommends that council approve the revised five-year underground utility district plan. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Anyone in the public would like to speak on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, Councilmember Quintero.
Morning, Jim.
Morning.
Jim, on this undergrounding that's being presented, just a general comment and maybe, and this is related to District Five. And I recall in the mid-'90s when we undergrounded the utilities along the Ventura Kings Canyon Quarter, remember that from First to Chestnut?
Oh, yeah.
And what we were able to do at that time was also put in the fiber optic at that time.
Correct.
And then, so you worked with, at that time, you worked with PG&E and Pac Bell, I think, was there at that time, not AT&amp;T. But the question that I've been, I've always had was that, my understanding was that PG&E and the bills that they sent out, they set, they set aside a small percentage of that utility bill to underground utilities in older areas of a community.
Correct. As long as it qualifies per CPUC standards.
Okay. The, the question that I've always had is, some of the older commercial areas in District Five, that being Butler and Orange area, you've got some of the old commercial buildings there, and they're still commercial, and those corridors where you have the wooden poles up in those older neighborhoods, and it, to some degree, it also prevents us from trying to get curb and sidewalk in there, and also light poles, you know, utility, because we have the lights hooked up to the wooden poles and that type of thing. But it would just seem to me that, that those older commercial areas like Butler and Orange Avenue would really benefit and help alter the look of those older neighborhoods and those commercial areas. And PG&E's right down the street from there, too.
They would, but our goal has been to use them on corridors that have the greatest impact for the community as a whole. We've tried to divide them into the various council districts as well, but a place that's got 50,000 cars a day versus a place that's got 5,000 cars a day, the greater impact to the community as a whole is being placed on where we can do 50,000 cars a day. We do have some, not in your district, but in District Three, we've got on there a district or a proposed district on North Avenue between Cherry and Orange, and this will complete some undergrounding in that area. We had moved that from Orange, because it was already undergrounded with some development, a developer had come in and done some previous work, and it wasn't necessary. So, we've rechanneled that money to where it would be of a greater impact to the community.
Well, I can tell you that twice a year, along that Butler corridor from the downtown area to the fairgrounds, you have, you have, just the numbers alone, you have over half a million people
Right.
going to the fairgrounds for the big Fresno Fair. And then, the other big event that they have there is the home show. So, Butler gets a lot of, a lot more than, you know, the numbers really go up at that time, you know?
We can look at Butler as a future project. The city would have a requirement at that point to convert their facilities. One of the challenges over the course of the past few years has been for the city to be able to fund these, these changes that the city's required to do. These funds for 20A only fund the undergrounding of the PG&E facilities themselves, not the city facilities associated with streetlights, traffic signals, things of that nature.
So, the monies that are set aside each month in the bill, those are, those are part of the monies that you're using for this, for these projects? The city's using for that?
It's a construction credit with PG&E.
Oh, construction.
The 20A. 32A, which handles the other utilities, mandates that they underground in the same vicinity that PG&E will with the 20A funds. There's multiple funding sources that come into play, depending on what utility you're talking about.
Yeah, because I've kind of asked every year about that Butler and Orange area, whether it's from the dais or internally, and they say, "Well, there isn't any monies available" and that kind of thing. But it just seems that, that should be part of the, I mean, last week we approved, or this week, the CDBG monies and all that to help older neighborhoods and that type of thing, and it would seem like we could start looking--
But as part of the conditions associated with the CPUC Rule 20A, the city's requirement enabled to utilize that money is to underground their facilities with their money. Going back to Kings Canyon, as you spoke, at that time, there was more money available. That conversion of aerial facilities for streetlights and traffic signals was funded with a capital product, with the funds that were available.
Yes.
As funds became more and more scarce, we had to use other funds, whether it be RDA-- RDA or whether it be trying to partner with capital projects that are being conducted within the city limits.
So what do you recommend I, I would need to do to kind of get that on the radar, Butler and Orange?
We've already done it. Uh, we'll, we'll be taking a look at it. We'll have to evaluate, we would have to evaluate at that point what the cost would be, whether there's a funding source available to take care of traffic signals and streetlights. And it would, it would possibly be a good project in the future.
Well, it's a great project for now. Not the future.
Well, it depends on, it depends on the money, too. I mean, if the, if the money's available and we can find the money, then, you know, yes.
Can I get some information from
Sure.
from your office on, uh, the, the process, the monies and the money flow and all that?
As far as the Twenty A or as far as the funding for
Related to Butler, Orange.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Screen is clear. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Councilmember Brand, second by Councilmember Olivier, all in favor? Opposed? Passes five-oh with Councilmembers Baines and Brandow absent. Next is Two B, adopt a memorandum of understanding between the City of Fresno and CFPEA staff. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. I'm Ken Phillips, Labor Relations Manager in the Personnel Services Department. Um, the MOU before you is effective through June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen. It includes a two percent wage increase after council approval with equity adjustments for various classes. It also includes a two-point-five percent increase on July first of two thousand sixteen. It brings the unit into alignment with others on an increased share of healthcare costs, increased contributions toward pensions for new employees, and reductions in leave accruals. The details are in the documents before you. We ask for approval of the pension side letter and the MOU. We would like to ask that you make some modifications to that MOU. The strikeout version incorrectly indicates that water system supervisor and wastewater treatment maintenance supervisor, um, would get an equity adjustment in two thousand nineteen, that should be two thousand fifteen. And Exhibit Three attached to the MOU transposes C and D at the top of the wage columns, it should be corrected. Finally, we ask that you approve the Fifth Amendment to the salary resolution, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. We'll take this out to the community. Anyone in the community like to speak on this particular issue? There are none. Bring it back up here, the screen is clear. Do we have a motion? Up, I'm sorry. Councilmember Brand.
Yes, I just wanted to briefly thank both sides for this, uh, long, um, negotiation. I think it worked out, uh, in the best of both, both sides, and I appreciate all the patience and make a, uh, motion to approve the item.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Brand, second by Councilmember Kintero. All in favor? Opposed? Passes four, zero with the modifications as placed on the record with Councilmembers Baines, Olivier, and Brandow absent. Next is Two C.
You that we do need five votes on the next vote. So we might want to wait on that till, yeah.
Some people just take a lot of time. It is Resolution Fifty, Amendment to the Annual Appropriation Resolution. Staff presentation, please.
Good morning, Council. Vice President, uh, Capriolio and members of the City Council. My name's Henry McLaughlin, Business Manager with the Department of Public Utilities, Water Division. Uh, before you today is the Fifty, Amendment to the Annual Appropriation Resolution. It is basically a rebudgeting item that will reallocate existing projects to different available funding sources. In February of two thousand ten, the city issued water revenue bonds totaling approximately one hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. The largest expenditure to be funded was the single-family residential water meter, uh, retrofit project for eighty-five million dollars. Subsequent to that, the city received two no-interest state loans totaling fifty-one point four million for the meter project. This required the reallocation of capital project funding and resulted in a delay of the scheduled drawdown of the two thousand ten bond proceeds. As part of the two thousand fifteen budget, it was anticipated that additional bonds would be issued during this fiscal year. With the modified schedule for the water capital plan, it was not necessary to issue revenue bonds during fiscal year two thousand fifteen. However, preliminary costs were still being incurred to keep advancing the water capital plan, and so these costs need to be a move to available funding sources before the close of two thousand fifteen, FY fifteen. Uh, the Fifty, Amendment to the AAR is submitted for approval to rebudget these CIPs to complete the drawdown of all remaining bond proceeds of six-point-nine million with year-to-date expenditures, and that's for the two thousand ten bonds. To transfer four million dollars in two thousand fifteen bond-funded projects and to move these remaining ongoing projects to the Water Enterprise Fund, which is our pay-go capital. This action will not impact the general fund and is funded with existing water system resources.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the public like to address this issue? Please come forward. There are none. Uh, Councilmember Brand.
Tommy, I just have a few questions. This was what primarily due to the rescission in, in the rates, we, we did unexpectedly, I guess?
That's correct.
And then, so what basically, from the prior year, we were moving forward on these projects and essentially we got ahead of ourselves?
That's correct.
Okay, so this basically goes back and provides the funding that would have been in place?
Correct.
Okay. And this, out of curiosity, from the, uh, the Enterprise Capital Project that Councilman Olivier and I did earlier this year, would probably address some of these issues in terms of the timing and sequencing?
That's correct.
Okay, so you need authority then to basically fund from the, uh, bond proceeds or?
That's right. We had anticipated spending, the budget was built around spending twenty-fifteen bond proceeds that would have been issued this year. We didn't, we didn't issue the bonds. So now we just get to get those costs allocated to the available sources of funds that we do have. So this twenty-ten bonds, our pay-go capital, just so that we can reconcile the books.
So in context to the, uh, the overall four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-million-dollar capital project, this is in the scope of that?
Exactly. This, it's all consistent with the four-twenty-nine that we brought to you in February.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. A second? Member, uh, Brand, motion, second by Councilmember Kintero. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes five-oh with Councilmembers Baines and Brandow absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Two D, uh, award of purchase contract in the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars to Selsi Enterprises. This is from Department of Transportation. Good morning.
Good morning, Council. Jim Shad with the Department of Transportation. Um, we're here today to recommend the award of a contract, a requirements contract, uh, one year plus four-year extensions for the purchase of, uh, utility bodies. Uh, you probably are all familiar with, uh, the truck bodies you see on our, our trucks that are constantly going around the city, uh, the nice tan-looking things, and that's what this is about. So, um, we typically buy four basic body styles, which were listed in the bid, uh, with thousands of variations of, of options. And so this vehicle lets us, on an annual basis, purchase the, the bodies for, uh, the various department needs, um, throughout the city. And practically every department utilizes this type of body for one purpose or another. The, uh, contract, as I said, was for five years. Um, the, the bodies range from a hundred and eight to a hundred and fifty-six inches, uh, no forty-footers, just, or sixty-footers in there. Um, the, uh, we did have only one bidder on this contract, Selsi Enterprises, and, uh, we did poll the, the folks that did not bid. We had thirteen prospective, but only one bid. Uh, the responses varied. Many of them, uh, would buy the body from Selsi and simply mark it up and provide it to us, so they chose not to bid. Others chose not to bid because, uh, Selsi does have an advantage, they don't get local preference, but they have an advantage in freight, um, two ways. So, um, many of the other bidders can't be competitive out of the area. And then, uh, we had one that just couldn't get their bid in on time. Uh, we've done this type of, uh, requirements contracts, this is the third time since I've been with the city that we've done it. Works very well for us, it allows us to buy vehicles, um, and, uh, tailor them to each department's needs. We don't like to tailor them too much, uh, we'd like to try and keep them standard, but it does allow the various trades and departments to, to buy what they want as we go. We have, um, we, we typically buy about thirteen a year, thirteen of various styles a year. Um, currently, we need, uh, we, we owe Water Division five units, uh, Median Islands five units, and Parks three. And then there will be more for roughly the same amount, uh, not necessarily for the same departments, but for FY sixteen, there will be another approximately thirteen units, and, um, they have been budgeted in the FY sixteen budget.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
And, and I think Selsi Enterprises is locally owned and locally operated.
Yes, they are.
That's an ex, that's excellent. Uh, anyone in the public like to comment on this particular item? Please come forward. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Kintero.
Jim, you said they were the only bidder?
Yes, they were.
They were. And you had, you sent out thirteen?
That, we, we, we had thirteen companies look at, you know, go on bids online and, and pull the documents, but once they looked at them, they chose not to bid.
Okay. Is anybody from Selsi here?
I don't think so.
No?
No.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to thank you and, and your shop for working with a local family-owned business.
I, it's, they also build a very good product, um, and as an FYI, these products, um, they typically last two chassis, outlast two chassis, so we will take the product off, refurbish it for about five thousand dollars, and it will go approximately twenty years. Very satisfied.
I grew up with a family and I think Councilmember Brand, old friends with him, and so is Councilmember Capriolo, but that has nothing to do with it. But it was, no, they're, they're a great, it's a great business, great business, and, uh, they've got the experience and do quality work, I know that, I've been to their shop, so, thank you very much. Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Uh, plus he had the best cars in high school, as I recall.
Exactly.
Uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Kintero, second by Councilmember Brand. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Passes five-oh with Councilmembers Brandow and Baines absent. Uh, going on to Item Two E, actions pertaining to the completion of construction funding applications for the City of Fresno's Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility, Department of Public Utilities. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Council. City Manager, Assistant Manager, Glenn Knapp, Professional Engineer, Department of Public Utilities, Water Division. Relative to the agenda item before you and subsequent to approval by council on June nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, the Department of Public Utilities submitted a safe drinking water, uh, state revolving fund application to the California Department of Public Utilities, um, of Public Health for construction funding for its proposed eighty-million gallon-a-day Southeast Surface Water Treatment Facility. Near the end of December, two thousand fourteen, the California, uh, Health Department was absorbed into the State Water Resources Control Board, and on January first, two thousand fifteen, the State Water Resource Control Board implemented new policies, uh, related to this, uh, state revolving fund, uh, funding programs. And inclusive in these, uh, policies were requirements for adoption of pledged revenue and reimbursement resolutions prior to the state extending a funding offer to the city for construction funding for the Southeast Plant. Adoption of these resolutions is one of the final steps in completing the application process to receive a funding offer in the near future estimated to be at or near a hundred and ninety-five million dollars at an interest rate of one-point-six-six percent over thirty years. This offer is opposed to utilizing, uh, general obligation bond funding typically at, typically at or near five-and-a-half to six percent interest over thirty years and will result in significant long-term ratepayer savings. This has been a long-term inter-agency cooperative effort that will provide funding for construction of a major water infrastructure component that will address ongoing drought conditions and significantly aid in meeting the city's long-term water resource planning goals for a reliable, sustainable, and balanced water resources portfolio. Myself and DPU staff are available to answer any questions related to this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll take this out to the public again. Anyone like to comment on this particular item? Please come forward. Seeing none, uh, do I have a motion? Well, it's in District Four, I'll move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, excuse me, Councilmember Brand.
You happened again today? You're fast. Um, just want to confirm that this was the original figure we talked about, um, during the water debate, as far as the state went?
Yes, that's correct. And it's just the step, they want to make sure that the governing body is on board with pledging the revenues prior to issuing the final loan agreement.
Do you think there's a possibility we get more?
So, um, this particular financing instrument that the state is offering is a hundred percent for the water plant, and we have applications in for all the rest of the projects, and so this will probably be a series of resolutions we'll be bringing to the council for, as each one is, the next one you'll probably get is going to be the Fry and Kern Pipeline sometime in the next four weeks, and then we'll bring regional transmission mains probably to it next fiscal year, and the Kings River Pipeline next fiscal year, because those aren't quite finished. We have the applications in, we've gotten a favorable response from the state, but they're not at the point where they can approve them because we haven't finished the plans and specs on those two projects.
Right, and by having substantially lower interest rate, that has a big impact on ratepayers down the road, correct?
Exactly. That's exactly right.
Now, this, he said the, the, the difference would have been doing general obligation bonds if this wasn't available. Wouldn't it be enterprise revenue bonds?
I, I was going to mention that. We would have went the revenue bond route on this particular, uh, financing instrument.
Does this take five votes?
No.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Well, I already moved to approve it and seconded by Councilmember Soria. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes four-oh, Councilmembers Soria, Brandow, and Brand. I'm sorry, Baines absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is Item Two F, actions pertaining to new software integration for the Water Division's SCADA system. Good morning.
Good morning, Vice President Capriolio, uh, fellow council members. Uh, before you today is a recommendation to approve a services contract with SciTech, uh, I'm sorry, Enterprise Automation to integrate new SciTech software into the Northeast Surface Water Treatment Facility. Uh, as many of you are aware, uh, this is the cornerstone of our surface water operations, currently delivering in excess of its rated thirty-million-dollar, million gallons per day capacity, uh, and it is in its eleventh year of operation. At this time, the current software is outdated and is no longer supported, so we would like to upgrade it to the same software that we just integrated into our well system, uh, so that we can move into the future and keep this plant operational.
Very good, thank you very much. Taking this out to the public, would someone like, uh, to comment on this particular item? Please come forward. Seeing none, uh, screen is clear. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kintero, second by Councilmember Brand, all those in favor? Opposed? Passes five-oh, Councilmember Passes 5-0, council members Brand and, sorry, Brandau and Baines. I have too many Bs up here, I need more Cs. Council members Baines and Brandau absent. Thank you very much. Next is item 2G, it's a resolution to adopt substantial amendment number 2015-005 for the annual action plan. Good morning.
Morning, council. Joe Trujillo, Housing Division Manager. The item that we bring before you today for your consideration is a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2014-2015 annual action plan, authorizing a $1.3 million home investment partnership program loan to the Housing Authority for the city of Fresno for its Lowell neighborhood project, and authorize the city manager to sign all implementing documents required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is a capacity building partnership between the Lowell CDC and the Fresno Housing Authority. This is a scattered site project with one component being the rehabilitation of Calaveras Courts, which is an existing apartment structure with 22 units. The second component is the development of eight new rental housing units at the North Glen site. The apartment complex on Calaveras is occupied, so the Housing Authority will provide relocation assistance to the existing tenants. There will be a total of 30 affordable units with 11 home-funded units. Home program funds will be provided to the developer in the form of a 55-year, 3% interest loan, with principal and interest repaid from the project's residual receipts. Total project cost is estimated at just over $6.8 million. The request today is to commit these home funds so that the city may issue a funding award letter to the Housing Authority for its second round of tax credit applications. A home program agreement and SEQA finding will be presented to council together at a later date. This item relates to prior year funds that were allocated for affordable rental projects. In the spring of 2014, the city issued a notice of funding for projects. Last June, the city council approved a commitment for funds for a project on Kings Canyon with the condition that the applying foundation acquire the additional financing, which, and also that they apply for tax credits and they did not receive their tax credits. This action is necessary to commit the funds for the agency to apply for the tax credits in July. So this action requires an amendment to the annual action plan to identify a specific project rather than a general program. We have housing staff and representatives from, I believe, Housing Authority and Lowell CDC to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Anyone in the public like to step forward and make a comment on this item? Please do so. Good morning. If you give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, my name is Barbara Fisk. My address is 1112 East Franklin Avenue, and I am, I chair the Lowell Neighborhood Association. I also sit on the board of the Lowell Community Development Corporation. And so I'm very excited to speak on behalf of this project. The apartments that have been mentioned that are, that are on Calaveras have for decades been in disrepair and have changed hands of different property owners. It's pretty, it's a pretty large property complex with two different addresses, and the city has spent a lot of money with code enforcement and police services and such to address this complex. Because of its size, we are very excited that somebody like the city of Fresno with the Housing Authority are partnering with the Lowell CDC to, to take on this project and improve it, make it healthy and safe, but also add to the beauty of that part of the neighborhood with the old houses. So there was robust, this time, I could easily say there was robust community participation. There was a meeting back in December before Christmas where the architect brought out plans, and community members reviewed them and gave their input, and especially regarding the project on Glen Avenue, the building infill project, their, their concerns and their recommendations were taken seriously. The architect changed the plans, came back to the community, well, with the Housing Authority, and proposed the new, the new plans, which were approved by the, by the community. So this is a wonderful opportunity to invest in a neighborhood that, there's a myth that we have a lot of low-income housing in our neighborhood. There's some neighborhoods in this city that have too much concentration of low-income housing. What we have is a concentration of low-income folks living in substandard housing. And so a property improvement project such as this will, will ensure that folks who are low-income aren't displaced as, as properties are improved, hopefully in the near future, and, and it adds beauty to our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public like to come forward and comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the DIAS council member Brand.
Thank you, council president, and thank you, Trace Well, for answering some of the questions last night, but some of this is a little confusing. The total cost on this, this is on whatever exhibit this is, it shows $3.7 million, and it has units like, it has 22, 31, what does that reference?
So that is just a proposed schedule of values broken down to show how many units would have that particular construction item completed?
If 30, you mean 30 units would all be affected, or one, okay.
Correct.
So some of the costs are pretty high, like the heating/cooling, 12,000 per unit?
Yeah, that's estimating that we're going to have to completely rehab and take out all of the existing and replace it with new heating and cooling systems.
So it's taking out the unit and reducting?
Yes.
That still seems pretty high. An interior painting and extra, 10,000 per unit?
That's correct.
Okay. Corian countertops, 1,800 per unit?
That's correct.
So if you take the total cost of $6.8 million, correct?
Correct.
Hard to, that's including 22 rehabilitated units and eight new units?
That's correct.
So that's 226,000 plus per unit?
That's correct.
Pretty expensive, very expensive. And the other breakdown, where it shows the sources, city, and then uses acquisition, the acquisition cost of $1,380,000, is that for the rehabilitation and the, and the land for the new unit, or?
Yes, 920,000 for the Calaveras acquisition, and then the rest is the vacant land on Glen.
Okay, and then identifies 1.5 million for soft cost, impact fees, and architectural and environmental, 228,000. That's a total of 27%, which is well above the norm for soft cost. Could you break out the soft cost?
So the soft cost would include all of our fees for applying for tax credits, it would include our legal fees, it would include all of our third-party consultants that do the market studies and do the environmental reports for us, and so it's all of our consulting costs, our, our construction interest, all of the loan fees included in there, financing fees, and so.
Well, they're not broken out, and I would say, in my opinion, they're very excessive.
And it, it does cost more to do an affordable housing.
I understand, you know, I mean, that's the, the affordable housing paradox.
Right.
The most expensive housing to build is affordable housing. And I know the way tax credits work is the more bells and whistles you got, the more competitive you get, so, but it just is counterintuitive to logic in a sense. I don't blame you, I didn't realize this is systemic, but on these, let's see, so on the rehab, and this is provided by Trace Well, it's roughly 90,000 per unit, that's only hard cost only, correct?
That's correct.
And the new construction cost, hard cost only, are 215,000 per unit?
Correct, and that does include the demolition that we're going to have to do on-site as well.
But it doesn't include soft cost?
No, it doesn't include soft cost.
Okay. I mean, I'm in the business, and I realize there, you know, with prevailing wage and so on, but these are just so excessive, and the irony is that you're building, if you could build without having to go through the, the rings of tax credit rounds and all the other stuff, you could probably build double, and you know, the market rate, you could build these probably at half the cost. You know, you could double the amount of units. To me, it's, it's hard to reconcile this, in my opinion, a gross inefficiency in terms of the cost, so until I get more details and justification, I can't support it as it's presented right now.
For the record, could you give us your name?
My name is Christina Husbands with the Fresno Housing Authorities.
Very good, thank you. Council member Quintero.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jennifer, for meeting with me earlier in the week and going over this with me, but for the record, as disclaimer, can you tell us again why Southeast Fresno didn't qualify?
I'm sorry, why?
Southeast Fresno didn't qualify?
This, well, the projects were rated by the, by the HCDC, so we went based off of those recommendations, and again, without having those in front of me, I can't, I couldn't tell you what projects were in the southeast area and where they, where they were as far as qualified.
Okay. Renee, Renee's got some information.
Good morning, Council Jennifer Clark. So a year ago, as you recall, we awarded, we had a NOFA, a Notice of Funding availability. We ranked the proposals that were received at that time, and at the time, we entered into a commitment, which is what you would be doing today, a commitment to award the funds to this agency, assuming that they receive their financing that's necessary. At the time, the, the agency that was proposing to build on Kings Canyon was unable to get their financing. We issued a new Notice of Funding Availability. The projects are underwritten prior to determination of which project has the highest and the most ability to succeed. In this particular case, this project not only had the, the land under, under assignment, they were contracted, an option to, to purchase the land, so they had the land tied up, but they also had additional cash resources that they were providing to the project, and they had the capacity to access those tax credits. So in terms of the ranking, the reranking of the, of the new proposal, so in this particular case, there were new proposals that came in, we re-underwrote them, and it was a whole new process from last year. So in this case, this proposal ranked higher because it had the ability to leverage more funding, and it had the commitment of all of the land. So that, that was why this particular project ranked higher at this time.
Okay.
And that being said, council member, the project on Kings Canyon, when we do the next NOFA for this type, they, they will still be able to apply?
And I want to thank your office too, because I know you had to get involved way back when, when we were having some hardship with, with the feds and that type of thing, so I want to thank you, Jennifer's office as well. So I needed that just clarified for the record. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, council member Quintero. Council member Soria.
I want to thank the Housing Department for answering some of the questions that I brought forth yesterday. I wasn't really going to speak, but some of the comments made by my council colleague prompted me to speak in terms of really questioning whether this is the best way to maximize the dollars that we have, especially these types of dollars. I'm a strong supporter of affordable housing, I know that, you know, just the other day I spoke about the, the need and really the, the lack of stock that we have here in the city of Fresno, but just kind of listening to the, to the numbers and really thinking whether is this the best way to maximize the, these dollars. I'm just wondering, just some other questions that I had, so who do you guys contract to do the rehab?
We go out for bid, so at the moment, we have, we use our consultants to find the best estimates that we can for construction, and then once we get an award of tax credits, we do a public RFP process and go out for bid. So sometimes there are opportunities for some cost savings when we go out to bid. When we do a tax credit application, we have to have a pro forma that we know can work with the tax credit application, and so, you know, in some cases, we are a little conservative, but we will go out for a public process as we do with all of our, with all of our, with our, a lot of our projects. In this particular case, we have prevailing wage on top of the cost, which adds an additional 15 to 25% depending, because we are potentially anticipating using some HUD funds that require prevailing wage, so that does increase the cost, but we, of course, want the ability to do that.
And this, is this typical, I am not an expert in, in the affordable housing arena, so is this typical generally with affordable housing developments in terms of the prices of how much it takes to build and/or rehab?
I did want to, I did want to address, I know that there are some, while council member Brand is familiar with the tax credit process, I did want to address some of the tax credit implications and the instrument that, that tax credits are that does increase some of the costs, and while council member Brand is correct, it can be a slightly inefficient program. I actually don't believe that that is the Housing Authority's inefficiency, and so I do want to, you know, just take a minute to explain that. So the tax credit program, the low-income housing tax credit program requires a number of things from the applicant and from the sponsor, that is above and beyond what a private or a market rate developer might have to, you know, might have to provide. And that includes market studies that are required due to the tax credit program, the code. It requires consultants to prepare certain documents, it requires lots of legal fees, or, you know, legal lawyers to require, to do all the limited partnership agreements to protect the investor, et cetera, et cetera, because it is a federal program. So one of the things that, while it can be considered a slightly inefficient federal program that we're accessing, what it does do is in this particular case, it's providing, you know, based on the sources and uses that you see in your document, it is providing $5 million worth of capital to get this project done, which otherwise wouldn't be brought into this community if it weren't for this tax credit, if it weren't for this tax credit program, and it weren't for the, the sponsorship of the Housing Authority, our expertise, and then our partnership, of course, with the Lowell CDC. So I think it's important not to walk by the fact that these funds wouldn't be available if we didn't utilize this program for this particular, for this particular project. There are obviously city home funds involved in it, and then the Housing Authority is committing some of our own funds as well. It is a competitive program, which means that just because you apply doesn't mean that you get it, and the Housing Authority is typically, typically very good at preparing these applications and winning. Over the past seven years, we've brought in over $250 million worth of outside equity into this community for the purpose of this affordable housing development. So a lot of the costs, while the hard costs are also higher than might always, might also be in a market rate or a private sector develop, development, there are a couple of other issues besides prevailing wage that increase costs. One of those is that it is an infill project, so those are just harder for construction companies to do. In addition, there's two different sites, so you lose some efficiencies and some economies of scale when you have two different sites being constructed at the same time. And there's a good reason for why we did two different sites. The 9% tax equity program that we're applying for requires three-bedroom units, and when we initially did the design and the architectural work for the Calaveras property, it would have been even more expensive. I could, I could see council member Brand calling me up on the original pro forma that we did when we were looking at converting some of the ones and twos in the Lowell, in the Calaveras property to three bedrooms. So what we decided is to split the property and to create some additional three-bedroom units on another site, because the tax credit program requires that we have three-bedroom units. The 9% tax credit program requires that. So it's all kind of a very, you know, delicate and fairly sophisticated balance of what you do for a project that enables the tax credit instrument to be utilized and that funding to be brought into this community.
And is, is this, in terms of the cost of the project, are these generally similar cost across the board, or if you can think of other projects that we, the city has done with the Housing Authority?
To be honest, it is a little higher, and it is a little higher. We actually did a project, a similar project, rehab project in council member Capriolo's district in Eldorado Park, and as I think most of you have had the opportunity to see that project, it's a, it's one we're particularly proud of, it's a rehab, and the costs for this are slightly higher than that in terms of construction costs, and the reason being the, the points that I mentioned earlier, that it is a scattered site and that adds additional cost to it, and we also found... And we also found that this property is in, unfortunately, pretty, as Ms. Fisk mentioned, pretty terrible condition. And in addition, we have significant relocation costs for our residents that are built into the pro forma as well, because we have to follow the Uniform Relocation Act. And that requires us to be able to provide relocation opportunities and options for all the residents that are currently there, so that they have housing while we renovate the property. So, all of those kind of complexities add cost to the property.
And are their currently monthly rents going to stay about the same?
You know, I don't actually have the monthly rent comparison in my head. Christina may have some of that.
So, some of the rents at the Glen site will actually be higher. So, right now, the rents average between $500 and $600 a month for the existing tenants. And so, we'll actually be keeping the rents at that location. On the Calaveras site are going to be pretty comparable. And then, the Glen site, we're actually hitting a little bit higher incomes, 45% to 60% of the area median income, to encourage some workforce families to reside there.
Perfect. So, and the units are a little bit larger. They're about 1,100 square feet on the Glen site. And one of the community feedback points that we got from our meetings was that they wanted diversity of incomes throughout the community. And so, while the analysis we did on our existing tenants and existing, not ours, but soon-to-be-ours, I hope, residents at Calaveras, that they were, you know, very low income. And so, when we developed the three-bedroom site, we responded to the community's request that those be at a higher area median income. And so, we targeted working families for that, so the rents are a little bit higher. Rents and tax credits are based on the area median incomes.
So, what happens to those folks that can't afford those higher rents? Will they be provided an option?
None of the, yeah, none of the existing residents will be displaced. They all have the right to return, again, one, based on the Uniform Relocation Act, but then also because of our mission. So, they will all have the right to return. There are no, since it's new construction at the Glen site, there will be new families that will be moving into those, into that property.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering my question.
Thank you for allowing us to explain a little bit more in detail around the tax credit program.
Councilmember Brand.
Again, going through some of the cost on your breakdown, you've got door hardware, $500 a unit. I mean, that's a lock, framing, I mean, that's pretty, near $600 a unit. And these are beyond this, you know, prevailing wage.
And honestly, we always do everything we possibly can to make sure that we are efficient when our construction contracts come back. It is a competitive process. We take the lowest bid. But we also make sure that our specs are such that we have to make sure that the project is sustainable over the lifetime of both the 15-year, original 15-year pro forma and the 55-year affordability compliance. And so, we're always balancing kind of quality of the materials that we use with ongoing maintenance costs. And, you know, we spend a fair amount of time with our construction partners doing value engineering and making sure that, you know, that the reserves that we set aside to be able to maintain the quality of the units at the level that we know we would want, you would want as an investor and the community want. So, in some cases, they may be slightly higher, but we always, we do our best to make sure that they are reasonably costed in the end, and it is a competitive process.
Well, I mean, a couple of years ago, we had a couple of homes in the Lowell area that were like, like $235,000 a unit, when the market was $80,000 a unit. And they had, you know, designer appliances, you know, wood floors, and a lot of features you wouldn't even find in custom houses. So, in my opinion, they were overbuilt.
Yeah. And I think that there, you know, we felt that that program and that project was pretty specific in that it was, with that NSP-1 project, we were requested by the city to, by city staff, to come in to a very difficult couple of neighborhoods and take some potentially historic, or the opportunity to have historic buildings and historic homes be renovated to the standard that the neighborhood would want. And so, we did pay extra careful attention to that historic, those historic renovations. And all of those plans were vetted through city staff to make sure that, you know, that the neighborhood, that the quality of the neighborhood was being brought back. And we did use city, you know, that was an NSP program. We were the kind of the instrument of that happening. That isn't the way that, you know, we typically go through our multifamily, new construction and multifamily renovation. We do, as I mentioned before, always balance quality of materials with ongoing maintenance costs and with the cost of the program. It is our desire, just as yours is, is to make sure that this program is efficient as possible. And I think that, you know, in general, given the nature of the program, we do a pretty spectacular job at that balance.
With all due respect, I don't think there's any, very little efficiencies. I mean, I think they're overbuilt. The soft costs alone are $60,000 a unit. We've done, you know, up at my company in the past tax credit properties, and have never even remotely approached $90,000 a unit in doing substantial improvements. Within the soft cost, how much is developer fee for the Housing Authority?
In this particular case, the developer fee is, it's about $700,000, which is the maximum allowed by the tax credit program. That developer fee is actually split between us and the Lowell, the Lowell CDC, which is part of the capacity building exercise. The developer fee would be for the same as it would be for any private developer or any nonprofit developer.
I wish I could make that much money.
And most private, you know, I'll give you an example. So, when we did, we're doing the project with a private developer, a couple of private developers in Edison with the Ha Group and Penn Star. We did a similar tax credit project with Terrence Frazier's group in the Fultonia project. In all of those cases, whenever we can, that we choose to max out the developer fee, if possible. And if there's a private developer, they obviously get a split. If it's the Housing Authority, we act in the same capacity as a private developer. And that enables us to cover our costs and also to be able to continue to invest in the community and do projects like CDC capacity building and resident services for our residents.
And who is Silvercrest Inc.?
Silvercrest is a nonprofit entity of the Housing Authority. It's a 501(c)(3), and the tax credit program requires that a 501(c)(3) be the administrative general partner in order to get the tax credits.
And again, with all due respect, with the parameters you have, with affordable housing credits and financing, I do believe this is substantially overpriced. I think it could come in better. And again, as it sits right now, I can't support it. Thank you.
I certainly appreciate your comments, and we will continue to help council understand the balancing act that we face with, you know, with our actual ability to bring in $5 million of outside equity. Because I am presuming that the market would have done this rehab if the market could bear, if the private market could bear this rehab, the cost of the rehab. And they haven't so far. And so, we feel privileged to have the opportunity to be able to provide this service to our community.
Well, one of the ironies, though, if you're basically, you know, packing the area or with high-density, low-income, it'll be more difficult to encourage open markets. So, there's almost, again, a paradox there. And I understand the need for affordable housing, but I think it's got to be balanced. I think one of the problems, particularly downtown, has been an over-concentration of affordable housing to the point where it becomes detrimental in the long run by not having, you know, to see that area town fully recover.
It is certainly a longstanding debate, you know, not only in this community, but across the nation about, you know, the concentration of affordable housing. A couple of things I think are very important for this particular project. One, this is, as Ms. Fisk mentioned, this is high-quality affordable housing. And we all know, in this community, and particularly in that neighborhood, that our residents who are not able to afford higher rents, they don't all have the ability to get Section 8. We have a 53,000-person waitlist on our Section 8 waitlist now, and a 4,000-person waitlist at all of our public housing properties. So, the need is certainly there, and the need is also there beyond, you know, to have a higher quality. You know, we, as a community, are working hard towards, on the code enforcement, and I'll put it in quotes, slumware issue. And I think that, you know, our level of quality really adds to the vibrancy of a neighborhood. In addition, as Ms. Fisk mentioned, from the Lowell community, we are responding to their desire to improve the quality in that community.
Again, the irony is, if they were built more economical, even within existing parameters, you'd have that many more housing available. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Soria.
I have two other questions that just came to mind. And Jennifer, maybe you can help me with this. It's in terms of deadlines. So, I know that these funds are for fiscal year 14, '15. Are we up against a deadline in terms of encumbering? What?
We need to commit these funds before September. The key of this particular action of the council, the Housing Authority and the Lowell CDC partnership need to have this agreement, this commitment, this action by the council today so that they can apply next week for those tax credits. So, HCDC heard this matter a little over a month ago, and the final documents were prepared for this body to review. And they will make their application in July. And we should know, I think, in late August, early September, if they've been awarded.
So, if the council does not approve today, what are the implications?
So, what we would do is, we would come back with another amendment to the annual action plan and identify a different project where we could commit the funds and have them obligated by the end of September.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Olivier.
A couple of questions. So, is it my understanding that there's $5 million as federal money, and that our obligation would be 1.8 million of the total costs?
To be clear, the $5 million is, it's actually money from a private investor who utilizes a federal program that provides that private investor with tax credits, ongoing tax credits for the next 10 years. So, it is a federal program that is allowing, that we're accessing that allows us to generate that capital. It actually comes directly through an investor. I think you all have heard Preston and myself speak about the investor partners that we have throughout the community. PNC Bank has been a great one. Wells Fargo's been a great one. And US Bank has been a great one. And typically, large banks utilize this program to access tax credits for their private, you know, their private use. And then, they invest that into our property. The remaining portion of the cost of the project is funded, obviously, by the $1.3 million that we're asking city council for. And the balance of that will be Housing Authority funds that our board has actually already approved.
If you were to not use HUD funds, but use home funds only, would it be a more cost-efficient project?
Yes, but the cost, the actual acquisition cost, as Ms. Husbands mentioned, is, I believe, $900,000 for the Calaveras, for the 22 units on Calaveras. And the 1.3 would only lead to about $500,000 for renovation. And I can't do the math quick enough in my head, even though they're easy numbers. That would leave, what, $15,000 per unit for renovations? And that is, we don't believe that the community would be satisfied with that level of renovation. $15,000 a unit would only put a Band-Aid on it.
And also to clarify, home funds are HUD entitlement, part of that entitlement.
Yes.
It seemed like some with prevailing wage, some without prevailing wage, some had other costs that needed to be included, others did not. I'm not sure. That's kind of the thrust of the question.
Anytime we start using federal funds, we trigger prevailing wage, period. And it goes for this project or transportation project. As soon as we say yes to the federal government, we trigger prevailing wage.
It seems like there are other things that are triggered as well that are not necessarily consistent with the points that councilmember Brand brought up, but I guess they're consistent with the federal requirements.
Yeah, and I think, and Trace will help me, what you're looking at is an engineer's estimate. And what Trace will is trying to convey to you is that, based on the engineer that they've used, and they've done value, they've asked another consultant to come in and do a peer review, that they believe this is the best estimate. But there's very, there's a strong possibility, as with any other project, that once they actually receive bids, these costs could be substantially lower.
Yes, I wouldn't say substantially, because I would hate to have to come back to council.
Expectation. It could be lower.
And say that. But, you know, as I mentioned, it is always our intention to be great stewards of public funds and to drive down costs when we can. Some of the costs are just not costs that we can drive down, because they're prescribed by the program. The construction costs, if we're able to do it less expensively, we absolutely will. And that's one of the reasons that we consistently use a public process and a bidding process where we take the lowest cost.
Is there a way to compare or contrast this to Eldorado Park and how that?
There is indeed. We actually did that comparison, because we wanted, since it's a very similar renovation, we wanted to see, you know, what the cost difference was. And while I cannot remember the exact numbers in my head, this is, as I mentioned before, slightly higher, cost per unit or cost per square foot. We learned a couple of things on the Eldorado Park, and some of that had to do with our cooling units. We didn't do enough reducting throughout the, you know, throughout the property, and that's why the air conditioning and cooling costs or heating costs are a little bit higher on the Calaveras property as opposed to the Eldorado Park property. In addition, on the hard costs, the construction costs, this is, again, two sites. And the Calaveras project, or the Eldorado project was right, you know, right on one, right on one site. And the added complexity of part of it new construction and part of it renovation has, our estimating engineers have added, you know, some room for that as well. And that's just on the hard costs. Then, the overall cost per unit, the total development cost per unit, the difference between the NSP project in Eldorado versus the Lowell project is that we used a different instrument, a different program, to be able to fund that. The NSP program didn't have the, a lot of the federal requirements of the tax credit program. It didn't bring any outside equity into the project, but it didn't, but it didn't have some of the legal, some of the soft costs. And to councilmember Brand's point, some of the soft costs, they tend to be high in the tax credit, particularly in the 9% tax credit world.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Councilmember Soria. This is an interesting issue, and I think we need to thoroughly vet it, and that's what this process is all about. So, please feel free to punch up. Councilmember Olivier, did you punch up again, or you, that's it? I see on my screen. That's the only reason I ask. Okay, thank you.
Can I make my comment?
Councilmember Soria, thank you.
So, just, you know, after hearing all the debate and just, you know, answering the questions, I'm a big supporter of affordable housing. I think that our community and our city needs to do a little bit more to increase the affordable housing stock. I will say that today, I'm going to hesitantly support this, because I do believe in the value of the $5 million of capital that it is bringing to our community. I understand that the need is there in terms of increasing our affordable housing stock. You know, I will say that when I hear you say that this project is costing more than some of the other projects, that's where my hesitance comes in. I know that, you know, from hearing folks, it does cost a little bit more, the irony, to build affordable housing. But I know that there is a need. I do, however, want to see that any future projects that do come, that we really maximize these dollars, because I would like to see much more affordable housing being built. So, figuring out and being creative about how we create projects that, where we can maximize and the costs don't continue to go up and up. So, like I said... So, like I said, I will be hesitantly supporting it today, but I do want to see that any future projects, we look at really maximizing every single dollar that we're getting.
Great. That is absolutely our goal, too. As I mentioned before, we're, we think about every dollar that we spend. We know we're stewards of public funds. And we're also happy to spend time, as we have, you know, reached out to all of you, and spend as much time as you all are willing to give us to talk about innovative and creative ways to continue to reduce costs. Thank you.
Thank you. The screen is clear. Do we have a motion? Motion by Councilmember Soria. I'll second it. All those in, oh, you know, let's do electronic voting. How about that? Yes supports the request, no is opposed. And the action results in a no vote with two yes votes, Councilmember Capriolio and Soria. So the matter fails, with Councilmembers Baines and Brandau absent.
You didn't vote. You didn't vote. He voted out of all of you. Yeah. Baines. Unless we want to vote again.
I can run down to my seat.
No. You had to vote. I want to stand in the assembly.
Some, thank you very much. The next item is Item 2H. Adopt a memorandum of understanding between the City of Fresno and Fresno Airport Safety Supervisor/Operating Engineers Local 3. Ken, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Council. Ken Phillips, Labor Relations Manager, Personnel Services. We've been in negotiations with the airport public safety supervisors since April of 2012. This, the MOU before you, would be effective through June 30 of 2017. It provides for a 2% wage increase effective after council approval, a 2% wage increase effective July 1 of 2016, and premium pay for a supervisory post certificate. It brings FAPs into alignment with other units on an increased share of health costs and increased contributions towards pension by employees. Details are in the documents before you. We ask for approval of the pension side letter, the MOU, and the Sixth Amendment to the salary resolution. I'm available for any questions.
Great presentation. Thank you. We'll take this out to the public. Anyone from the community wish to come forward and speak? Now is the time, and you have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here to the dais. And I see the screen is clear. Do we have a motion? I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Capriolio, second by Councilmember Olivier. All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Passes 5-0 with Councilmembers Baines and Brandau absent. Next is Item 2I. Approved side letters of agreement implementing provisions of AB 1522. Good to see you again, Ken.
Thank you. AB 1522, the Healthy Family, Healthy Workplace Act of 2014, is to be implemented on July 1. The Act mandates that all employees, including temporary employees, earn sick leave. The Act does not require changes in accrual for employees in permanent classifications who already earn sick leave. However, it does change the circumstances under which employees can take a certain amount of sick leave. Very briefly, it allows for up to three days of sick leave to be taken either for the employee and expanded list of family members, or for domestic violence or stalking, excuse me, victims of domestic violence and stalking. It provides for reinstatement of sick leave if an employee leaves city employment and returns within one year, up to 40 hours. The side letters of agreement you are being asked to approve would amend MOUs with employees to make the mandated changes. Again, I'm available if there are any questions.
Thank you. Once again, take this to the public. Anyone in the public wish to address this particular item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. The screen is clear. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Soria makes the motion. I'll second the motion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0 with Councilmembers Baines and Brandau absent. All right. Moving right along. Item 2J. Approving the reallocation of $1.5 million from the Property/L liability Self-Insurance Fund Contingency Fund to refunds and claims. Personnel Services, good morning.
Good morning, Council. Mike Payne, Risk Manager, Personnel Services, and City Manager, Assistant Manager. The purpose of this actually is, it's consistent with what we've done in prior years. We're actually moving prior-approved funds from the reserve account into the actual claims account. And the purpose, really, there's no additional appropriations required. It's included within the original budget, and it'll just be a transfer that better actually represent the total expenditures that we had by moving that from the budgeted contingency into the actual expense line.
Very good. Thank you. We'll take this out to the public. Anyone in the public wish to address this item? Since no one's coming forward, we'll move back up here. Councilmember Soria.
So I just had a question in regards to the use of the funds. I know that you said that we've done it in practice. I'm new. So what do you guys need them for? What, will we be using the entire 1.5?
No. And actually, as this rolls over, this was an estimate, as we go through the year, we've actually expended funds for the, basically, the claims that we've seen, that we've actually discussed with council, been approved by council, those approved by the manager, as well as those approved out of the Risk Management Office. This is basically, the contingency is out there. It's consistent from, I'm new also, from the other, the prior annual actions, to just move those contingent funds to balance out with what are actual expenditures that had been approved, to better represent the true expenditures when we close the books for the year.
But what kind of expenses is it? Expenses from various, from various departments? Is it one specific department?
No, it's for all of, it basically includes, this fund includes all of our liability expense payments that we have made as a city for all claims throughout the course of the year, both in the original budgeted and then into the contingency funds.
If I could just elaborate.
Okay.
If I could just elaborate, this is to compensate for all the various claims throughout the year in the respective departments, and it's not only the cost of any settlements of claims, but for legal expenses, for investigatory expenses, for all expenses associated with the respective claims over the course of the year. So what we are finding is that towards the end of the year, we have expenses greater than the refunds and claims that we had budgeted for, and we use the contingency to balance that out every year. And so this is, this is coming to you with the request for what we need in this fiscal year to balance out those expenses.
So we went over 1.5 million?
It could be a little bit less than that, but that's what we are estimating we will need from contingency to pay for all of those expenses in that particular line, yes.
Do we have a list of those expenses that we are anticipating that are over? I just would like to see, I'm uncomfortable, like, I get it that this is common practice, but I'm uncomfortable voting on something without knowing what we're expending it on?
Through the City Manager's Office, yes, we could provide information to council. Most of these expenses are already committed in terms of legal fees, settlements on claims, and, as I said, other associated expenses with claims.
And what happens if, say, for example, we approve the 1.5, but it's only a million dollars? What happens to the $500,000?
It stays in the fund.
In the?
In the.
In this fund?
Yes.
Okay. In the contingency refunds claims fund?
Right.
Okay. 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 Thank you.
Thank you. Screen is clear. Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilmember Olivier, thank you. Second by Councilmember Brand. All those in favor? Are those opposed? Passes 5-0 with Councilmembers Baines and Brandau absent. That pretty much resolves our calendar. We're now set for scheduled communications. There was a scheduled appearance by Rick Morris. Mr. Morris, are you in the building?
He's not in here, but we also have one more, the special call meeting.
Oh, would you announce that, please?
Sure. It's to authorize the purchase of the city's fiscal year 2015-16 insurance coverage as included with the proposal by the city's broker of the record, Alliant Insurance Services, and authorizes the city risk manager to bind coverage.
Let me take this out to the public. Oh, staff, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so what we're doing here is, we actually, this year, went out, again, as usual, for competitive bids on the insurance coverage for the city. Included in the report is the breakdown of the premiums last year compared to this year for those. We actually, the only increase that we really saw of any size was in the liability, and that's been a very difficult market. We actually saw our carriers from last year remove themselves from the California market this year. So Alliant, as our broker of record, went out and actually received bids from about 20 different potential carriers this year. All of the insurance packages and carriers we put in place and are proposing to you today have equivalent or better benefits than we've had in the past and better coverages, and the costs of that are within the budget that we submitted and approved for 2016. So I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Again, anyone in the public like to step forward and comment on this item? Please do so. Seeing none, back to the dais. Councilmember Soria.
So just a question in terms of, I guess, timeline and the need of a special meeting? Is there a timeframe that we're up against?
Well.
What's, yeah, in terms of the purchase or renewal?
Okay, the coverages that we have tie in with our fiscal year, July 1 through June 30. And so what we need, what we propose and want to do is actually to make sure we bind these coverages and get back to the carriers that, yes, we accept your proposal so that we don't have a gap, or we don't have to incur additional expenses to run a tail on the current coverage while we wait for those approvals. So it's much more efficient, and then also, we want to get these quotes back to us, and it is close to the timeframe at the beginning of the year, because, again, the carriers want to get as close as they can to the end to look at our experience, to give us the best and most cost-effective bid based upon our true experience for prior claims.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion? Did I take this out to the public? I did. Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Soria, second by Councilmember Brand. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes 5-0. Councilmembers Baines and Brandau absent. And now back to scheduled communication. Appearance by Rick Morris. Rick, are you available for your scheduled communication? Apparently, Rick is not in the building. Councilmember Soria.
I just had a question for the city manager in terms of the progress of the Fresno. I've been kind of seeing on, I think, on Twitter, and there was a Nextdoor email just earlier sent by one of our detectives in my neighborhood, that it's up and running. So I just wanted to confirm that that's true, so that if it is, that I'm letting my constituents know that the app is running and that they can begin to utilize it.
It is somewhat up and running. It's being beta-tested.
Okay.
So it's not available to the public. We plan or anticipate a rollout Wednesday, I think, of next week.
Okay.
So.
And you guys will make sure that we're kind of in the loop, so we know, and we're sending a, maybe a consistent message to all our constituents?
Yes, and we've been working with your staff, because, again, the goal is to replace their council request for legal services with this application.
Perfect.
And so we will continue to work with you and your staff as we roll, this is going to be pretty exciting.
I'm excited about it.
So we look forward to the rollout and then maybe working again with you guys as far as implementation.
Okay, thank you so much.
City manager, I had one more question as well. On the gray water availability, is that, do we have a date for that, so I could go get gray water and water my plants?
We'll work with, I think, Mr. Esquera, there's an announcement, I think, somewhere around 1st of July, that that'll be available to the public as well.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have any, we'll now call for unscheduled communication. Anyone like to step forward and participate with unscheduled communication? Seeing none, that will end that portion. Two things I wanted to bring out. One was, I think this is the, the good news is, I think it's the quickest meeting on record, about a minute, an hour and 17 minutes, if we had not had another record-setting moment with 48 minutes of ceremonial presentations. With all that in mind, I think it's apparent.
I've got another record-setting.
Yeah, Councilmember Quintero would like to add some comments.
Yeah, I've got another record-setting moment for this week. Is, no, this is, and I want to congratulate the council and the administration, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce Renee, this is the first billion-dollar budget that the city has voted on. So, huh? No?
We've had two billion-dollar budgets participated.
It's the highest. When was the other one?
We've just had one.
When was that?
Uh, 1941.
Under one, four years ago?
About 40 years.
Oh, I just come back then, so I got part of both of them. All right, good. So, but this one is the highest, 1.2? Okay, good to know.
Historically.
Historically and record-setting.
Hysterically, yeah.
Screen is clear, so we would be adjourned to the meeting, remember, in the memory of Frank Trossey, as per Councilmember Brand's request, and for what I understand, he was a fantastic individual who would be missed by everybody.
He was a 92, and he, 1941, graduated Roosevelt High School, Harry Coffey, All-American, baseball player, any move to be a baseball player, was abandoned in December 7, 1941, Pearl Harbor. He joined the Army Air Corps and served in North Africa and England, and part of the greatest generation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.